All right, it's seven o'clock. We all rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Parker, you have a report for council?
I just reported to the board that the fire, the new firearms that we ordered back in November, October, November last year, haven't arrived, but we haven't, we're not gonna start carrying them till we get through the training, so. Other than that, we just talked about our flight broke and, or flight broke, broke. So we'll get that fixed, but that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Ryan?
The new station on Core Street has been, new pumps and controls have been put in, stationed on Core Street. We decided to update that station with all the new homes going in over there. That station was thirty years old, I do believe, so. Up there in age, so everything is original still, so we did upgrade all that. And then this weekend, obviously everybody knew we had a ton of rain. First time we've actually discharged into the ditch since the plant's been built, so. We ran for about a little over forty-eight hours straight through the pumps, so. So we had a lot of water coming in, so.
We fared fairly well, though.
Yeah, oh yeah, and then we pumped like crazy, we filled our, our EQ basin up, and we had, it took about six billion gallons of water, so. We're bringing that back to the plant.
That drain, I checked it out in the heat of, in the maximum, during the time we were getting the maximum amount of rain. It wasn't even hardly a quarter full, seemed like, so. All right, any questions for Ryan? All right, I'm going to jump right to the IRL ordinance. Mark Hupner was gracious enough to come here and explain and answer any questions that somebody might have about the IRL ordinance. So, just wondering if you could give a brief overview of what the ordinance says, what IRL is?
I'll let Marty sit down first.
Oh, sorry, my friend. Sorry.
Okay, IRL stands for Inspection Reports Online, and basically it's a independent company that the contractors submit reports to, so if you owned a business here in Woodburn with a sprinkler system and a fire alarm system, and then you hired a contractor, such as Corson, VFP, Shambal, Kern McCannell, whoever, they would come in, do the inspection, and they would automatically submit it to IRL, okay? Electronically, and then their good or bad, I would get the report immediately. For instance, a business in New Haven, inspection was done in October, I went to do the inspection myself in January, and there's deficiencies from October. If we would have had IRL in the Haven, I would have been notified, notified right away that there was a problem, and I could have addressed the situation. So, there's no way I can make it to every business in our coverage area annually. I'm over fifteen hundred reports in less than three years. So, a lot of inspections, but our coverage area, City of New Haven, City of Woodburn, Mommy, Mylon, Adams and Jefferson Township, there's no way I can get every business down annually, so. This will help me out, anything west of Brookwood in New Haven has a four-wheel zip code, so these companies are already submitting to IRL because they see Fort Wayne, they submit it to IRL, four-wheel fire departments shipped it to me. So, there's no fee to the taxpayers, the individual business has assigned a twenty-five dollar fee for a sprinkler system or a fire alarm system. So, Phoenix Manor has a sprinkler system and a fire alarm system, so their fee would be tacked on to that. And those, when they have those inspected, IRL, they submit it to IRL, and then I get the report.
It's my understanding that this ordinance requires companies to, to use companies that report IRL?
That's correct. Any questions about IRL or how that all works? City of New Haven passed the ordinance, as soon as the City of Woodburn passes it, Chief Fells is gonna take it to the county commissioners to pass it countywide. So, unincorporated areas will also submit IRL, or have the opportunity to submit IRL. Okay?
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate that. So, in light of the fact that everybody didn't necessarily get this ahead of time, we can maybe do an initial reading by title only, or we can do a reading of the entire ordinance. I'll entertain a motion for either of those. You're gonna have to pass it tonight, or pass it for the next meeting.
I'll move to read by title only.
Second.
All who are in favor to read by title only, raise your hand. Everybody present?
Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen twenty-nine, ordinance establishing a new provision of the City of Woodburn Fire Prevention Code.
Move to accept the reading?
Second.
All who are in favor to accept the reading, raise your right hand.
I'll move to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All who are in favor to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance, raise your right hand. All right, thank you, Dan.
Yep.
I'm going to turn to audience members, and I'll start, ma'am, I'll start, I'll start with you. You're gracious enough to come to our meeting, and whatever, if you have questions or comments, go ahead.
Yes, I'm actually here about my water bill. So, we typically run about seven thousand gallons a month. We got a water bill for thirty-three thousand gallons. So, Ryan came out and checked the meter a couple times, I spoke to Kim a couple times, and then also, I, right, so my, the property management that I go through also spoke to Kim. So, pretty much, Kim is, was saying that because I said something about me having a leak a couple months prior, that it was found as actual usage, and we had to pay it, and when we were asked if we could send in the findings from the plumber, we were told that it wasn't necessary because that was already, what it was ruled was that it was actual usage, which is a little insane, too.
Did it, Ryan, you said you, did you see Ryan?
Yeah, he's familiar about, yeah.
Yeah, the water, that's reason, the water went through the meter, and there's no doubt about that, so. That's not questioned, the sewer is in question, they just don't know where it went to. When I was down there, she had mentioned that the plumber fixed something on the toilet. Typically, they say when that comes up, it was a toilet issue, so it went down the sewer also. Now, to say what, how much it was, I mean, all we can go by what the meter is telling us, there's no data log for that meter, it's a pit meter, it's all, you know, there's no data log available for that meter, so.
Was it leaking that much, or caused that much gallons?
It was fixed before I got there, so I don't, I don't, I don't know anything other than what it was.
Have we checked back again to make sure that it's no longer leaking?
No longer an issue, yeah.
Okay, I believe, I believe I brought this up last meeting, and the council had, there's nothing we can do for, if it's going down the drain, there's nothing we can do. I believe the council did grant you, and I, maybe, I don't know if it was communicated with Kim or communicated back with you, that they were gonna give you some leeway and to suspend the penalty fees that you'd normally get, and allow you to make, you know, partial payments on some of it, to get caught back up instead of having.
So is it gonna be how it was when we, because I've already done this before, across, literally across the street from where we currently live? And so they pretty much suspended my account, opened a new one, and we made payments until it was completely paid off, as we did last time.
No, 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 instead of you getting penalties, like you'll be charged a penalty, if, since it's gonna be late, we'll just take the penalties off for three months in order to let you sparsel those, you know, divide that payment up. The difference between the seven thousand normally and the thirty-three thousand, we'll take that payment, divide it by three, and you'll have you pay that each month, and then we'll suspend the penalties that you'd normally incur every month, for, through three months, as long as you stay on time with the bills.
So, going forward, how can I fix this? Because obviously we didn't use the additional. My husband was the one that fixed a leaky toilet months prior, so it wouldn't have been related to this issue at all. And if, I mean, if we, I was a homeowner mom for weeks, so if my toilet was continually leaking, I would know about that. Obviously, I know I'm responsible for my bill, so is there anything that I can do in the future? Because this is now the second time we have a cost.
Leaking or running?
So, it was running continuously, my husband fixed it months ago. So, it wouldn't have been anything that would have been tacked on to this because it's not running, we had a plumber come out, he crawled under the house, he checked every toilet, our water heater, there was nothing.
Yeah, when I was there to meet it, the meter wasn't, everything's off the house.
Yeah, and I was the only one at home, everything was off, I mean, so I'm not sure how we got some weird, crazy difference.
Well, those meters won't jump, I mean, they only read the water that goes through them and back, so I mean, they don't, that's all they do, they don't, there's nothing to them.
Typically, when the meters are broke too?
They stop.
It goes the opposite way, they'll stop, and you, you won't pay it, you use more water than what you're paying for, usually not the opposite way forward. So, in order for, you know, prevention or something like that, there's no real way to tell until, you know, people checking on their bills, on every bill, there's a usage of how much used for that month. It's what goes through the meter, there's nothing that, we, there's nothing that we can control here. We go around, we read the meters, at that point, you know, there's, there's no, nothing you can do until you, until you get that meter read. So, there's nothing on anybody's end unless you hear something running, you know, it's something that you know you left a spigot on, then you turned it off, or, you know, the, the toilet's running and you can hear it.
What does that mean? We could put a new meter on there, that obviously there's gonna be way more accurate than the old one that's in there. But it's a data log meter too, so it reads usage all the time, so we can be able to hold a record for three months of what she's used.
So, the toilet issue was months ago, and that didn't, you didn't notice it?
Yeah, it probably fluctuated a little bit, it only ran for a couple days before we realized it and it got fixed.
Okay, so that wouldn't have, that didn't really have a big impact on that, that timeframe's bill?
Well, it's our everyday use toilet, so it's something that we got pretty fast.
Yeah, okay, and then this time, no noticed issues or anything like that until you got the bill?
We had a plumber come out and he called.
Then you received the bill and saw that it went from seven thousand to thirty-three thousand again?
Yeah, which, they called and told us, like, two or three days before the bill came out, they warned us that the bill was coming, which is why we had a plumber come out and.
We warned her, the day we read is when she got called.
Yeah, there was no findings with the plumber then. That's odd.
But there was no other leaks anywhere?
Nope.
There been outside spigots, yeah, turned on?
He checked it, there wasn't, yeah, he checked it, so.
Only problem with the toilet running is, that water goes down the drain, and we, this is the cost of us processing it.
Absolutely, I understand that. Will we get something in the mail or communicated by Kim?
Yeah, Rachel, if you want to follow up on that, so, if, I think Kim already knows who it is, because this is a while, this happened at the last meeting, so.
It's been a couple weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, so if we want to, you know, get with Kim and make sure that gets adjusted, and make sure the penalties get taken off for her, and then we'll divide that, you know, we'll do the math between the seven, we'll have to go back and look at a couple months of what they used. You know, we'll get months of how many they used, find the average out, and then subtract the average from what that bill was. We'll divide that up into three months, and then they'll not get penalties for three months, as long as you guys stay on top. And they'll, you know, they'll just keep track and make sure you're paying that extra amount on top of what it is. That way the total balance on the account goes, you know, will go down. And you won't get any penalties for that.
Absolutely.
So, I'm sorry, there's not more we can do?
That's okay.
I mean, you know, you don't know, and, you know, if it was something that you guys found, that it was a spigot on or something that you know it didn't go down, otherwise you kind of have to assume that it might have been a toilet or a sink, or, I mean, obviously, you're at the house, so you would, you know, know. But there's no way for us to know as the utility that it didn't get used in some sort of fashion, so. But I know that a huge bill like that out of nowhere, a huge jumping bill like that really, you know, puts a damper on things, so. At least allow you a couple months to just make, I don't know, I don't know what the difference is, a couple hundred bucks extra, you know?
It's more doable than.
Yeah, than eight hundred dollars, yeah, what, what was the bill anyway?
It was like nine, nine eighty-nine, maybe?
Yeah, probably compared to a two-hundred and something dollar bill.
It's typically about two, three and a half, maybe is what we typically run it.
Yeah, so, you know, six hundred bucks, so you have five, five, two hundred bucks extra a month, so at least that doesn't put you out completely, but.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it, last time we kind of went over it, but it's hard to put a face to it.
I had just started a new job, so I wasn't able to make those.
It's all right, I appreciate you coming tonight and talking to us.
You might put the other new meter on there?
Yeah, if we have it, yeah.
Well, we got new meters, I mean, we, yeah, we have them.
Let's do that.
Let's do that, and then.
At least if it doesn't give, we'll be able to tell exactly what days it was on.
Do you have a, do you have a water softener?
No.
Okay.
No, I did, we, we, yeah, it is.
Well, you're, you're, that's, it's a, you're renting it, right? Okay.
Yeah, we'll get a new meter, we'll put a new meter, it's a pit meter, so it's not.
In this course of action that you just described, we agreed to at the last meeting?
Yeah, we did, yeah, we already agreed to, just putting a face to the, to the agreement that we already discussed.
Not supposed to do that.
Well, thank you, coming in and, and telling us.
I appreciate it.
Sorry, I can't do more for it.
That's okay, this is unfortunately our second time we did this, last time it was a water heater.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, that's okay.
What was, what was your name again?
Alyssa Carroll, A-L-Y-S-S-A.
C-A-R-R-O-L-L?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure you get taken care of on that.
Thank you.
And then, so it's a pit meter, so you don't have to be, you don't have to get on site for that, you could just change it?
Yeah, we just change it out.
So that'll at least help, and that way, those meters will just, you know, detect spikes in it too, that if something's off and you call, or, you know, the next reading, you'll be able to see what it was. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, it definitely helps, it pinpoints some time.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go to the resolution for the sale of property at two-two-one-two-one Main Street. Resolution two-five-two-eight-four. Entertain, entertain a motion to read by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only.
Second.
All who are in favor, raise your hand. All right, that's everybody present?
Resolution number twenty-five dash two-eight-four, a resolution of the common council of the City of Woodburn, Indiana, authorizing the sale and disposal of real estate by the city to promote an economic development project or to facilitate compatible land use planning.
Move to accept the reading?
Second.
All who are in favor to accept the reading, raise your hand. Marty, I see you're here?
Hello.
Thank you, how, how's business going?
Good, actually, great reception, few sags, snafus, first month, having fun, you know, welcome to business.
Yeah.
Not first day, but, get it, but yes, community's amazing, everything's stellar. Couldn't be happier at this moment, you know, but we're still working through those things, you know? Nothing's ever perfect, but we'll keep rolling through and get into. Hiring's been a bit of a challenge, but, you know, it can be occasionally when you have your own business, so we'll keep going, but, yeah.
You gotta be one of the hardest working guy, I went in here and seen this guy, and he's running back and forth. And, I mean, you were bustin' hump, dude, so, I mean, you gotta be one of the hardest working dudes.
It's kitchen, man, that's what I do, thirty-seven years of fun.
And I've heard nothing but positive things about you guys.
I heard you have smash burgers.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to go in and get one.
Yeah, you gotta come back, because if you was a little, that first day was a little challenging.
That was first day, though.
Green crew, they did amazing, they, I mean, really, nobody, nobody broke down too bad, we did have a few tears, but we, we got through it, but I've been through it, and I always try to warn them, like, just don't let it get in your head, man, let's just game up and pick up that pack and get up that hill, soldier.
Your staff was phenomenal.
Thank you.
Bright the light.
Appreciate that, they're, they're amazing, it's my family.
Food was good and the prices, I think, I mean, that was a huge complaint before.
I've, I've worked on that extremely negotiating, I'm a pretty good negotiator.
Taste and everything, I mean, you guys got it.
Appreciate it.
Nailed it all.
And we're gonna just get better, because as a chef, if I'm not challenged, I can't succeed. But yes, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you for coming.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All who are in favor, raise your hand.
Who was the second?
Uh, John.
John's?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, is that the third?
All right.
So we're good?
I think so.
We are.
I think everybody wants to know.
Andy Rex, what are you doing? Marty, what, I think everybody wants to know what you plan on, on doing?
Uh, actually, expansion. There could be a future project there, like to move Mojo LLC or Corporation Headquarters to that particular in the back. So that we can fix in issues that might, might be existing in that area that could help with sewage and other forms for the city, inclusive to my own project development. Maybe partner up with some adaption of making some of those things that have problems down there a little bit simpler for everybody. And so maybe a building in there with our office, moving from my home office in, in Fort Wayne, actually, and make Mojo LLC, who owns that restaurant, actually, that we own. Our international office, right?
All right.
Nice high-rise.
Yeah, yeah, all thirty-two stories, small golf course, you know, but we have to, to talk to the, you know, R and R for getting over the road tracks.
Right, right.
But, you know, they're always receptive to any idea we have. But yeah, and expansion to the restaurant as well, and we'd like to put some greenhouses in if possible, and we'll talk about variances and different things down the road, so. Project development is, let's say, in the incubator stage at this point, but yes, it will be somewhere where we can increase tax revenue on that property that is making you down at this moment. And we'll, we'll see what we can do, and I'll make it a win-win situation for Fort Wayne.
Appreciate you working with us on that.
Right, are you kidding? You guys are amazing, thank you.
Well, thank you.
I think a high-rise at Woodburn is three stories tall?
Yeah, three stories.
Four. Four, okay.
Four only, I know, I was gonna talk to Marty about it.
He raised me in.
He's like, look, thank you, children.
Yeah.
Peace, brother, see you soon.
Yeah, we just gotta go, like, thirty-two stories in now, you know? Underground.
Bunkers.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Herb?
We got our new Allen Alliance meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, so if anyone wants to come, you're welcome to come to that. I haven't got an agenda for it yet, so we'll see.
Okay. Appreciate it. Okay. Kevin. Metalink Tower rental contract, wanna go over the review on that?
Yeah. I kind of told Board of Works, we went, so, I don't know Terry and John, if you guys don't know. Metalink has three antennas up on our water tower right here in town. We had got a freedom of, you know, some, someone inquired about contracts that the city had, they're the only ones that we have rental contracts with. As I was looking at it, the contract was from two thousand and ten, so fifteen-year-old contract, the contract went for ten years, and then another ten years if, if, if nothing else got agreed upon to. But the rent is two hundred dollars there a month. I originally got hooked on to this because we were paying for Metalink Internet that we weren't using, and so we got that taken care of and taken off, it was like two hundred and twenty-three dollars a month, we got that removed from our bill. And then, as I was looking up the contract for that other person, I incorporated this all into a meeting with the, with the guy from Metalink. But basically, just, you know, an increase on what they already have up there, since it was written fifteen years ago. The guy told me he was gonna come with a, basically a proposal of a calculation of how high the tower was, how many customers they had, and how much they were willing to increase the rent. And when I met with the guy, he didn't come with anything besides a number, so there was no proof of that. He was willing to double it, and one other thing he wanted to do was in negotiation, or, you know, talk to talk, also to talk about taking the three down that they have up there now and adding four brand-new ones up there, pick up more customers, increase speed, stuff like that, and and then they would pay the extra, since they use more electricity, they're, they're willing to pay the electric people to go up there and add more power if they need to, and also cover more of the electric bill as well, if they do add those. The thing with that is that he, that he wants to do a survey of the city and get numbers in of how many people would, you know, how many people would pick up the new service, and how many people would add it to see if it would be worth them putting up the new stuff, to put up the new, to put up the new antennas. At a minimum, I mean, we have to increase, the, the contract was from fifteen years, we have to increase the rent at least. But I, so I just wanna, I, I told the Board of Works and to make you guys know as well, I'd also like to get some sort of concrete information of where he's coming up with the four hundred dollars at. And then Ryan also brought up a good point of if we get a new water tower, to have them pay for moving their, to move their antennas over to the new tower. So.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I only met with the guy once, I've only talked to him one time, so, just something on the radar that you guys should probably know about, that way when it comes up of the re-up, you know, re-upping on this contract, you guys are all on the loop about that, because it's our only thing that we can, so.
I think if we put a question in the AIM bulletin board, municipal board, I think a lot of people will probably respond to it and say what they, what they charge.
Yeah, so we talked about that, of putting that in there and getting some feedback from other cities of what they charge. It's hard, it, it's hard to do from other cities too, because they might not have as many people to pick up from that. But at least we can get some sort of idea, you know, or, or like you said too, New Haven, ask New Haven, because that's the closest people, they have Metalink over there, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
A que, a question about the internet?
Yes.
Were they charging us a separate internet for the phones and computers?
So, on the bill, it just broke out, on the, there's, we get two bills, one for the police department, one for City Hall. Police department didn't have internet on it, just City Hall did, it was just, it just said internet service for two-twenty-three a month. So, when I had called, the guy, the first girl originally told me, well, you can't have the internet, you can't have phones without the internet, and I thought that was nuts, because we have our own internet. And then, then when I met the guy here, the guy that came and met me, his name was Fernando, he's the COO of Metalink, and he told me he'd get it taken care of, and they did, they called me back that day and said they got it taken off of this bill, we had a credit, I think they credited like one month only, which took care of our, the current bill that we have, so. And then it wouldn't be on there going forward.
Yeah, because I, I think if you had, you can use one internet for phones and computers, you just have to give them a static IP for the phones.
That would, okay, so, because they had got with, they were unsure about what the deal is with that, but they had called Caleb. From, that dude Fernando got, I told him to call Caleb and say, and make sure that we were good before they took the internet service off and cut all our phones off, so, I, yeah, I made him call Caleb beforehand, and he got with Caleb, and they said it was all good, so. It was definitely something like that, though, and, and the other, the girl, or maybe, maybe it was him, I can't remember who it was, one of them had said, maybe at some point, you know, the thing, something was different where they did need the internet still to have their phones, but now they didn't have to, or something along those lines.
Well, as long as we don't lose the phones and we still have internet, I guess we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
And saving money at the same time.
Yeah, well, and getting more for the rental, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's at least give, you know, save us two-twenty-three for the internet and give us another, at least two-hundred on a rental contract, so. I mean, it's not a crazy amount, but four hundred dollars a month is a nice amount. So, yeah, that's where I'm at, you know, I, I, I'd like to request from the guy to bring us more concrete evidence of where, you know, where they're getting the number from, and then we'll do, then we'll figure something out from that. Present that to you guys and make sure everyone's okay with it. All right, just an initial, what do you guys think about the, them putting up new antennas? They would, they would take, they would take the three down and put four new ones up, if they got enough from the survey back. They'd have to get like ten per, he said he wanted, like, ten percent of what they sent out, like, ten percent of the population, they'd have to get a response back. So, it's not a definite thing, but just initially, are you guys, would you guys be okay with putting up another, you know, netting another antenna up there?
It's got a give and take for me, because the antennas kind of look gaudy up there, but it is providing a good service to the. It's kinda give and take for me, cause the antennas kinda look gaudy up there, but it is providing a good service to the, to the residents.
Yeah. Especially people outside of the immediate city where Comcast can't reach.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's a huge help.
Yeah.
Yep. Just FYI, sometimes when I boot up my computer at home, uh, the city of Woodburn wifi comes up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's so direct.
Yeah.
Almost aiming right towards your house.
Yeah, almost.
Cause we just do a rebroadcast to PD, right?
Yes, that's what I rem- what I recall.
The water tower shoots to the.
It's the link.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have a wireless link from here to PD. Same as to.
Yep.
Your barn.
The barn doesn't have, I thought the barn had fiber there, no?
Oh, okay.
Cause it goes to the water, they, everything shoots from the water tower.
Yeah.
Their, their main.
So three of those antennas are Metalink's, but we've got two of our own up there that are.
Oh, okay.
Link antennas.
Yeah.
We're look, we're looking to get the fiber to the shop, cause fiber's already on that side of the street, so. Caleb's gonna look in the, so who's gonna take the, go from there up to the shop?
Run down Homestead.
Then you come back on the backside of plane.
Right through.
Or, or right there. It's on the road.
We need it.
Okay, Deputy Clerk, computer?
Uh, I, you guys should got a quote in there, I think that the. It says Kim's quotation, but it's gonna be Rachel here soon. Uh, yeah, for nine ninety-eight, that computer has Windows ten on it, and then Microsoft is stopping support for Windows ten, I think sometime this year. So they wanna update it. To get it, there's a different CPU on this computer that will support Windows eleven.
Has to be Windows eleven for business, pro for business, doesn't it?
I don't know, I don't know.
I think it does, I think it has to be pro for business.
But yeah, that, the computer that she had, the CPU that's in the computer right now doesn't allow you to upgrade to Windows eleven.
Jeez.
Don't get rid of that, we need that for the water plants.
What's that, that one?
Yeah.
I think that's a necessary upgrade, yes, we, you checked around for prices and that's about the best price you got.
Yeah, I've had, I, well, yeah, I mean, I've been talking with these guys, these Forestech people, they're different, they're with Caleb. You know, that, that's the company that bought Caleb's out, and you'll see on the other one for the rebroadcast system, me and that guy, the guy who puts these quotes together, we went back and forth. I think the one for the broadcast is down to like eight grand, it started at like twenty-one thousand, so I've been going back and forth with him, what, what they charged for doing things.
But it was a justifiable drop.
Well, well, you know what, they tried to, you know, they, about the, you know, um, labor or what cable they're using, and so.
Just keep hammering.
Yeah, so. Uh, if you wanna get approval on that.
I'll move to approve the Deputy Clerk. That computer.
All's in favor to purchase the new computer, the Deputy Clerk? That's everybody? Okay, since it was mentioned, we might move right to the broadcast system.
Yep, so it's also. Let me figure out where that was at. The name of it, I don't know the name of it. Oh, quotation, quotation one six five oh six. Uh, this will give us, they're going to install a different camera, cause this camera is not, the camera that we're using right now isn't meant to do this. This was sort of a way to get us kinda started on the system and, uh, give us a good, uh, foot in the door with broadcasting, since we have to do it by July first. Um, this one will give us a system, so right now, it's kind of a, um. Uh, thrown-together system of the microphones and the cameras, this is a little bit more professional setup where you can expand it later on too. Uh, this will put a microphone up on the ceiling, one microphone on the ceiling that captures everybody in the room. And then one camera that will be somewhere up on the wall that will capture everybody in the, uh, chambers. And then it will, instead, so right now, the broadcast is running off my computer, it'll take that off my computer, it'll put it back in the room. Really, the mechanical room, and then we just have a button that we basically press when we wanna start it and stop it, and that's all it'll do.
Like a DVR back there then?
Yeah, it's like a little, it's called the Black Magic, uh, design, this, this thing right here, so it basically just hooks into the internet and.
Accessible and cloud.
Yeah, yeah, well, everything's on YouTube, so yeah, so it'll, they'll, they'll hook it up, um, so the quote was super high, because they had us, where we would able, where, we were able to control the camera. And the microphones, we can mute sections of it, but I think a basic system of the microphone capturing everybody's voice. The camera, as long as it's clear and we're in a good position, I don't think we need to control it, to move to each council member as they talk. I don't think we're that big, but this, but this, it's a nice system that'll allow us to, it'll look a little bit more professional and sound a lot better, and look a lot better. So, um, the system we have now is just, it was a good way to get started, but I think this is, I think we should just do this, I, we did, I did budget for it last year, so.
Is this a one-and-done, or is it a service?
No, this is one-and-done, this is one-and-done, once they set it up, what we'll probably do is the first meeting is, they'll probably be here after they set the whole thing up. And that way they can get the camera position right, and the microphone. Sound right, where it's not too loud, not too quiet, and then after that, it's set it and forget it, you just start, start it and stop it after it's done. So, and yeah, this is with the install and everything, I think our install is included with the, we just have to pay for the cables and stuff to install it, but I think the installation is free, since we already have the contract with them too. We already have the IT contract with them.
Oh, this is that comp- this is.
This is.
Subsidy of Caleb, the company Caleb worked for.
No, yes, works for, yes.
Works for, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Caleb's company is the subsidy of this company.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is Forestech, so this is the new Reliance, so every, all of our IT and all our billing, everything goes through them now, nothing goes through Reliance anymore. Uh, but yeah, this is them.
Alright.
Uh, if you guys are good with this, um, I did talk to that guy, uh, when I was talking to him about this, and I asked him. How, I, I didn't wanna pay for something or, or be on the hook for something under contract, and have it be six months or three months, like we were waiting for the iPad to get set up. And I told him, I was like, I wanna be done by the end of July, that like first May meeting, so he's like, he said that as long as they have that timetable. After we get it, if we get it approved here, and we wouldn't sign the contract till we know, okay, this is the deadline we're trying to hit. I, I like things to get done, I don't wanna, wait, I don't wanna be under contract for three months, and have them, oh yeah, we're coming this week, or we forgot this one cable, come here, do the work, and. Does anybody have any question about this, or, or what? Or anything, Dan's over there? Typing a memoir?
I read through it, it looks a lot better than the first proposal that was given to us, so.
Yeah, I think the first one was twenty thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars.
This was eight thousand something?
Eighty-one seventy-three thirty-six, yeah.
Okay.
They took out, a lot of it was, it, how much we wanted to be in control of this, the other one, they had like a controller here, microphones on, for every person on the desk. You can mute and unmute people as they, as they were talking, you can move the camera to whoever was talking, it would go to be on them. Um, they had it set up something where you could put, we could put like a TV up here, so if we wanted to display something, we could also put that up there. So they had a like, they had did all the, all the, there was a lot of labor for running the cord up into here, through the wall, and into this. And then to wire up all the microphones, all that labor wasn't included in our contract, and there was also a server upgrade in that as well. And so.
One day it might be there.
Yeah. Yeah, and so when I got on the phone with him, th- this is the third quote I got from them, but basically I just said, I want kinda what we have now, but it, for it to look better and sound better. So.
Again, since it's not going away, we might as well make it look right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a good system too, that we, if we want to add more stuff like that, we can also do that, there's nothing, he basically just took things away, and he didn't really switch anything. It was just taking s- some of that away, but we can still build on it later and do that later if we wanted.
Well, I'll move to, move forward with the broadcast system quotation and issue a PO for that. I'll second, or Terry.
Who's second?
Terry.
Terry, second, all's in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's everybody present?
Okay, I'll get them on it and.
Alright.
Like I said, the first meeting might be a little bit, the microphone's gonna be real loud, or it's gonna be real quiet, and then we're just gonna have to adjust, but. After it's set up, we shouldn't have to move or do anything. And then, you know, if there's something, they're gonna hook us up with something where we can go onto the, a website or some sort of program that will start and stop it. That we can put on the computers too, so if I'm not here, you, you know, that anybody can control it as well, so everyone will have access to start and stop it. And it should name itself automatically too, like the, like, you know, whatever, city of Woodburn meeting with the date, or something like that, they're gonna have it default where it'll be. You know, where we start and stop it only, and it'll broadcast by itself, so it'll be, be real nice.
Good, it'd be nice to, uh, have a, um, integrate a, uh, the, a YouTube window on our website for that.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that's something we should probably ask about too, see if we can put a live, the live stream up there.
Yeah.
On that. Yeah, it's not a bad idea, it'd be cool.
They're gonna want that mute button on after a while.
Alright, uh, Electronic Recycling Day. If you have anything, I gotta get a drink.
If you have anything else to do, or, or give me a minute.
Alright. How about the minutes? If I have a chance to look at them? Yep.
You wanna do the minutes, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I just asked to review the minutes.
Okay.
Under treasures, clerk treasures report.
Mm-hmm.
Third item, uh, Sarazin's, misspelled, but that's all I saw.
Sarazone.
Sarazone.
Yep.
Under mayor's report, did you mean the county ordinance zoning, the zoning, county zoning ordinances updates?
I believe that's what we're talking about in there, with some ordinance about heights of ceilings and stuff like that.
I, I would just put, put zoning between county and ordinances.
Okay. Alright.
Oh. Sarazone and the warrants presented to. Two times, right above the first one.
Uh, there's the bullet two for the warrants. Oh, Sarazone, yeah, that's weird. I wonder if it autocorrected it twice? If I just mistyped it. I'm glad she's not here.
I'll move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second. All's in favor? Raise your hand, that's everybody? And, um, how about the warrants?
Yeah. Uh, warrants over five hundred dollars, this'll be a whole month's worth, and. Um, since we've been doing the one meeting a month, these are, uh, a little bit more hefty, it's a whole month's bill, so. Um, as always, I'm gonna skip over any payroll items, that's cool, with the Board of Works, so. Um. Oh, warrants over five hundred dollars, AIM for five hundred dollars. ASP, ASPs, ASPs? Yeah?
ASPs?
ASPs, one thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, Bank of New York, thirty-three thousand four hundred, four hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, Boney for ten thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents, Voice Forums for five hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Chemical Services for six thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty cents, Cintas for five hundred seventy-one dollars and six cents. City of New Haven, thirty-three thou- uh, thirty, three thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. CNI Fiber for nine hundred fifty-four dollars and ten cents. Consolidated for two thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Elon Financial Services, seven hundred eighteen dollars. Everett J. Prescott for seven hundred ninety-two dollars. Force Technology for two thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Force Technology for five thousand two hundred ninety-nine, uh, two thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. IDEX Laboratories for one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Indiana Michigan Power for five thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, Indiana Michigan Power for four thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Invoice Cloud for one thousand four hundred twenty dollars and seventy-five cents, JP Landscaping and Loan for one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Local Government Services for one thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. NIPSCO for two thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Selective Insurance for five hundred ninety-six dollars. Verizon Wireless for five hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents, Wex Bank for six hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. WM Corp. for ten thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
That's it?
For now.
That's all. Um.
Till next week.
I have a question, do they roll the Main Street lights in the entire city lights now?
No, those are still separate, so.
Cause it's listed as Main Street, I don't know.
There's multiples, I think, in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it listed out, this is, if you go look in the email, and Ryan, did, did you get that email?
I did get that, perfect.
So it's, oh, you liked it like that?
Yep.
So yeah, if you look into this one, it says Ryan with the accounts payable registered, it actually breaks down.
Yeah.
If you go to Indiana Michigan Power, see, each one has the address on it, how much it was, and then where it came out of, and the amount, and then the date, so it actually breaks it down. So if you go down to, yeah, page four. Yeah, there you go, see, it breaks down by address in the description right there.
Yeah, okay, good.
I didn't give it that way to me, so I could watch the plans and stuff.
Yep, yep, so that breaks down everything, gives the description of each line item, when, when you do this right here, this, this presses it all down, so. And here it has Indiana Michigan Power twice, is because those are two separate, since it was a month, I did two separate pay files, but two separate checks, which is why you see two line items here. Which it rolls everything that I paid for one into one line item, everything, another batch into another line item. But this breaks it out of everything that's in here, this breaks it out into each individual appropriation and the address and the amount. How long did we look for this last time, Ryan? I clicked on it, I clicked on this one on accident, trying to print out this one.
This is perfect.
And it printed out perfectly, I'm like, there you go.
Just got all the information I need.
So yeah, if you guys wanna break down of, of actually all these line items and what they are, uh, everything's in that description and, and who it got paid out to and the amounts. On that one, it has for Ryan, uh, it's a little bit more detailed instead of just having it as one line item.
I hope nobody wants to break down.
It's a lot, yeah. The one month, the, the month in between, the one month in between meetings, there's a lot of, there's a lot.
I need to see what happened to the gas at the, at the stations and electric at each station and the plant.
Yeah.
I need to see those so I know if something goes crazy, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just gives me, you know, I can tell you what each thing's using. We'll have to look for it.
Zero, 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 one percent.
Do you want to make a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand? Alright, that's everybody.
And after, we, the, the next one will probably be about this big too, since we have one more month. Then we go back to the two months, or the two meetings a month. It should be about half the amount that's here.
So we got one this month, then, then we go to two?
Two in May, yeah.
Yeah.
So ideally, it'll be the first four months, the last four months will be basically winter.
Okay, May are gonna have two meetings.
Yeah.
Next month.
Yeah.
So Electronic Recycling Day?
Yes, so, uh, Jeff Abbott brought this to me from the township. Uh, this is a program that OmniSource runs, that they bring out a truck and, uh, bins. And people from the city can bring their electronics to recycle instead of bringing them up to OmniSource. So it'd basically be a day that we would have set up somewhere here, you know, maybe out in this parking lot or this back one here. And people drive up in their cars, give their electronics they wanna recycle instead of throwing them away and, and, yeah, then they leave. Um, TVs and printers, anything electronic, phones, stuff like that. So Jeff brought this to me and we met with the lady. The one that I have in here, you can see that this is a one from, um, Saint, Saint Joseph Township was in Fortland. And, um, this is their invoice, so they charge, uh, the first three items on there, they don't charge for some things. But they charge mostly for TVs and printers and stuff like that. And whatever, um, it costs them to recycle it is what they charge us. Uh, if you look on the second sheet, which is the, like, advertisement from the Saint Joseph Township one. They charge people, they, they allow people to bring everything for free except, and then they, except for TVs, and they charge for TVs. They charge twenty and thirty dollars depending on how big the TV was. This is something that we can choose to do or not. If we wanted to do it, you can charge people or not. And depends on, you could, you could change the size of the TV or the amount, it's all, it's all up to you. Um, so if you see they, it's a setup fee of five hundred dollars. And their total bill was the, was the fourteen thirty after they collected the seventeen seventy in cash. So, you know, it's about, you know, thirty-two hundred bucks total of what they got charged and they collected seventeen seventy from people dropping off TVs. Um, me and Jeff, you know, Jeff brought this to me, but we had the idea to split the cost of this with the township. And do it on the day that we have the, uh, bulk pickup for the city. Yeah, so for the citywide pickup, we would do this on the same day, we would do it in the afternoon. Cause Saint Joseph Township has their pickup day for this year in the fall on the same day that our bulk pickup is. So we were gonna do it right after that, she said they would go drop off the containers from them, bring it over here to us and set it up and start doing it. Um, and then we can charge whatever we would want. So, at worst, if we didn't charge anything. This right here, this, uh, invoice, they started at nine AM over there and they were filled up and leaving the spot at ten o'clock. They got filled up, they were filled, they.
An hour and a half?
An hour. They maxed out everything. She's, they stood out there and handed out cards for the next, however long it was, two hours. Like another hundred and fifty business cards to let people, if they wanted, if they had something, they could take it to OmniSource and pay the same amount that they would pay if they were there, yeah.
Wow, cause it would be more if they actually would.
Yes, yeah. So. So yeah, this is what they collected, so we could charge whatever we would want. But at worst, even with, even if we split it with the township. And if we didn't collect any money, at most, we'd be on the hook for sixteen hundred bucks. That's if we got completely filled up and if we didn't collect a dime, it looks about, at worst, that's how much we'd be on the hook for.
That's about nine thousand pounds of electronics.
Yeah. So, so, my, you know, what I was saying with Jeff was, on here, on their sheet, they charge twenty dollars for, uh, TVs that are under thirty-six inches. Or under forty-six inches and thirty dollars for TVs that are over forty-seven inches. If, I, I think we should do it, I think it's a good thing for the community.
Yep.
Uh, we're, do it on the same day as trash pickup. I think that we'd get some traction. At worst, if nobody comes, we're only paying the five hundred dollar setup fee, but we would split it with Jeff anyway, would be two hundred and fifty bucks.
And you get the one seventy-nine direct, I mean, from rebate, I mean, from taxes. From the city. I mean, you would, you'd be able to write that straight down, even if, as an, as an eat, wouldn't you?
Uh, we don't file taxes.
But you know what I mean, I, I mean, you get some kind of reciprocal from that, or?
No, we would just do it, we, you know, we'd just do it as a promotion.
Right.
So we, you know, we just pay it out of pocket.
Some other way to pick it up on the other side?
No, 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 we would just do it along, you know, just like we do the trash pickup, you know, you know.
I don't know how many times, after the citywide trash pickup, you see televisions.
Every year, every year.
Be a big plus positive on that too, but yeah. A good time to educate too, because you're not supposed to throw TVs in dumpsters.
Yeah. Well, there's lots of times too that in the back here, there'll be dumpsters back here too, so. Um, you know, that's splitting the cost and it's, glad Jeff brought this to me, cause then we could split the cost with them and, you know, I think, I think we should do it.
Seems like a good program.
Yeah.
It's good.
I think it helps people out.
Try it one year.
Yeah.
If it flops, it flops and then you know, then we know.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about too, is, you know, with the, uh, what day we wanna do it, we could always move, next year, we can move the trash pickup day to a different day, move it later into the year or, or move one or the other and kinda adjust and see what would work best, but.
What day is that planned?
Uh, it would be the same day the trash pickup is, I think it's September twen- I think, uh, September twenty-seventh it is.
Okay.
It'd be Saturday, so, um, Saint Joseph Township, the, this one's from last year, but I think it's one day before.
So is the trash pickup two, it, cause isn't the, aren't the garage sales on the ninth and tenth?
Yeah, the two weeks before the trash pickup is the garage sale.
Okay, so the trash pickup is twenty, twenty-fourth or twenty-third? Friday or Sunday?
You're on May.
Yeah.
This is, this'll be in September.
Oh, we're talking, talking September, okay.
Yeah, this'll be fall, it's gonna get, you know.
In September, then the, the car show and all that.
Yeah, so it'll go.
Week after that, I believe.
Yeah, so we have, so normally, we do the trash pickup one week after the garage sales, but since the car show is there.
Right.
We move trash pickup one week. So it'll be garage sales, car show, trash pick.
Yeah, I'm sure Genie will fill me in.
Yes. Yes. So, yeah, so it's the thirteenth and fourteenth is the garage sales, the twentieth is the car show, twenty-seventh is trash pickup.
Alright, is it an electronic, it'd be the same weekend?
Same weekend, okay.
Same day as the bulk pickup?
Yeah, okay.
So basically, they would leave, the nine to noon here at, uh, Saint Joseph Township, they would go drop off their stuff and then come here and be here by like one o'clock. They'd be here to set up.
Right.
And they, we don't have to provide any volunteers or anything like that, they pay, they have all their people, they come here, they set up, they collect, she'll, she'll be here to collect the money. And then they pack back up and leave. So there's nothing that we'd actually have to do, I mean, just advertise and stuff like that, but we wouldn't need any manpower to.
Set up where we used to have the recycling?
That's so, Jeff talked about setting up out there by the water tower.
Yep.
Um, the, the only thing we had discussed, maybe that might be a little bit out of the way, that, to get it more eyes on it. Is that maybe have it right back here behind City Hall, so they can drive in one entrance, drop off, leave out of the exit and leave. So that way, there's no like turning around, I, I mean, it's the same idea out there, that you would drop off your stuff and leave, you know, go one way and leave out the other.
Never had visibility problems back there before, did we?
Yeah, so, yeah, we didn't.
I prefer you not to market anymore.
Yeah, we, I mean, we didn't, you know, we didn't settle on anything like that. We wanted to get it approved here and then he was gonna bring it over to his people, but. I think he, sounds pretty good, I think they sound pretty good with it as well.
Yeah, alright.
So as long as you guys agree with it, again.
Yeah, let's go for it.
On a rough estimate, you know, if, again, if, if we went based on what their estimate was right here, we'd be on, on the hook for seven hundred and fifteen bucks.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So, as long as you guys are okay with something around there, then, this is if we fill up completely, too.
I mean, it's a lot of television.
Yeah, yeah. So my idea was, instead of breaking it out by size of television, charge twenty bucks. Go to the ATM, get a twenty out, no one wants to have, you know, no one's carrying cash, no one's gonna have thirty dollars, they have to go to the ATM, go to the gas station, break it, I'm not doing all that. Twenty bucks, bring your TVs, you know, twenty dollars per TV.
And dump it.
And dump it, yeah.
Yeah. Cause they're not going anywhere anyway.
Yeah.
So you're just gonna be looking at it in the garage.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we won't have the volume that they have in Saint Joe Township anyway.
Oh, you see where it's, that's on Maple Garage, you know?
Yeah, eighteen hundred TVs, we don't have eighteen hundred people here.
Exactly.
But, you know, even at worst, even at worst, the setup fee's only five hundred bucks. So we split that with the township, you're talking about two fifty. So if nobody shows up, that's all we're on the hook for.
It's not bad.
No. So I just, you know, it oughta be a good idea to include that in with the trash pickup, give, you know, more people options instead of throwing them in the dumpster behind here, leaving them out on the street after trash pickup day.
I believe it's, if it's advertised well, I think it'd be more popular than what we think.
Sure.
Yeah. We talked about too, putting this, we could put inserts inside the bills for people who get paper bills still. Put that in there, put it on Facebook and out on the sign, the website, maybe on your, on the Facebook page.
Yeah.
So.
Share that. Since there's a lot of people gonna be upgrading to Windows eleven, you may have some lot of little C P U's out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
She, man, they said they have a bunch of different programs there, they, they, I, it's, I don't, some special needs people that they have that, um, rework some of the computers if they can find them that aren't, you know, in too bad a shape, they rework them and use them for things. And, uh, you know, they employ people who, you know, have like DUIs in the past or people with the law. And they help, then they give them like certain jobs to sort. So, she, I mean, it seems like a real good program.
They'll even harvest like valuables, I mean, there's, there's magnesium, you know, a lot of gold, different things that they can bring out. So they just bring hard drives out and start to get parts, so gives people things to do, that's awesome.
Better than in the trash, in the dump, you know, uh.
Absolutely.
In the dump.
Yep. Busy minds.
And I can't even imagine how many people have TVs sitting in the garage or their basement.
There's so many.
That you wouldn't mind dropping it off for twenty bucks, it's like.
At least they don't weigh fifteen hundred pounds anymore like the second TVs do. It's like those things were impossible to get rid of.
Or a pickup.
Yes, that too. And they're always in a basement.
Garage, yeah.
Alright, anything else, Kevin?
Um, I don't know, what else is on that?
Did you wanna ask for them to consider, um, a future ordinance about purchasing? Cause you had that in there, I don't know if you wanted to ask.
Yes.
Have that as a reference for them to look at.
Yeah, so are we good, so are we good to, are we good to bring this to Jeff? Are we all in agreeance to move forward on this, that will?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, everybody's deal with that?
Yep.
Okay. Um, yeah, though, I think, well, it's probably the last thing I had was the, um, spending ordinance. And Ryan said we might have one of these, I didn't, I looked for it online, I didn't see it. The clerk treasurer over in Grable is, that's where this came from.
We did one of these for town.
That's what Ryan was saying, we couldn't find it.
Is it a, on a resolution?
It may have, I don't know if it was an ordinance or a resolution, but we've had this conversation, not that we can't do it again.
Well, no, I, I wanted to, you know, I just wanted to maybe have the lawyer look into it too, and maybe he could find something that I couldn't. But, kind of ironic, I didn't wanna spend money on the lawyer.
Right.
If you guys, but, you know, basically, it just gives five hundred bucks on things where, uh, just to cover my own butt, if, you know, something were to happen where we have that, a single purchase up to five hundred dollars.
What do you need to do between meetings and stuff?
Yeah, yeah. I thought, I thought it was.
Paying bills, just paying the, uh, utility bills before, when the meetings, when the meetings are lighting up, there's ordinance somewhere with that.
There's that, but we had something else, we had like miscellaneous purchasing power or something like that.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
I, I don't know what it was, it may have been something that we're supposed to do every year and didn't.
Well, if you guys agree with it, I'll contact the lawyer, the attorney and have him look into it, and if we don't have anything, have him make up something so we can get, you know, something along these same lines. If you guys are okay with that.
Was that Grable ordinance really back from back in nineteen ninety-eight? Nineteen ninety-eight?
Nineteen ninety-eight, yeah.
About third meeting there.
You were there for it?
Third, my third one, yeah.
Really?
Alright.
Who was it?
John, do you have anything?
Yet, building up again or no?
One mattress down on the floor.
Just five bucks?
There's what?
One mattress laying on the floor.
I think, I don't wanna like buy something and then.
Bedbugs.
Yeah, I don't know, the state board of committee go, you didn't get approved on as before. I don't know.
Yeah, but we can settle.
You know what I'm talking about?
They don't drop them off. Terrible idea.
Alright, that's all I had.
I would say.
Yeah, a couple things, um, yeah, plus donation agreement, we're getting close, we got a few things we're working through, a few bugs. So hopefully, what, with them, two or three leaks, we should know on that.
Yep, negotiation between our attorney and their attorney.
Yeah, so. And at the last Main Street meeting, the chief and I were tasked with the idea of, a couple things here. Um, notifying the people on Main Street during the car show that they would have to.
Yeah, get that.
We're gonna close the street off. And the credit union said that we could use their parking lot for parking, or for those people to park. Maybe, like, maybe the liquor store would let us do that too, behind there. So I think you had an idea, well, you were gonna send a couple notices out.
Yeah, I think we had to send, send some letters out like here pretty quick, just to give everybody a heads up what's coming here at the, what is it, September? Maybe something signed from me that you can issue out, or? Yeah, I could draft some up and let, email to you. We'll, we'll just mail it to everybody here on the, the main drag and then later on, we'll mail another one, like, maybe a couple weeks prior.
Okay.
We should probably try to come up with some sort of transportation plan to where, like, ahead of time, and this is probably what the letters will do, you know. While the show is going on for people that need to get in and out of their driveway or get, travel from their house into their house.
Your biggest issue's gonna be these right here.
Yeah.
No, those are the ones we're thinking of.
From, uh, Elm to this corner here, they have no, they have no access to get to their homes. The rest of them have down, they get down through the alleys to get to their house.
Right.
It's just these right here.
Just these, yeah.
Both sides of the road, yeah.
And maybe if.
I think, I think everybody should get a letter, everybody should learn what's going on, but these guys should be notified, you, you're gonna not, you gotta find somewhere to park.
If the credit union said they're open to that.
They, he, he volunteered.
Maybe we could say that would be exclusive for the residents of Main Street.
Yeah. Be satellite, yeah.
So.
Might wanna, they've also talked about serving ice cream there and giving it out to people and having an ice cream thing in there.
That's right.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was, it was back, it was the back though, I think you.
Back, back behind for sure.
Behind, where they said it would be, yeah.
I wonder too, in the liquor store too, that big lot back there, we could use that.
That's not the liquor stores.
It doesn't, or Tom Miller's, is it?
Yeah.
Well, he'd must use it, right?
I'm sure he would. I'm sure he would, if somebody asked, I'm sure he would say yes.
Okay.
Well, then U A W Hall, the U A W Hall there too, is a good one for parking.
Yeah, I'll say, Terry, I'll say something to him about it.
Yeah. I think they mentioned U A W Hall too.
They did, yeah, sure, the union, if you have good rich, we'll talk to that union.
Yeah, that's what I said.
It's the same one.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's options, just, few of these people here are gonna have problems.
And then we're gonna need garbage cans.
Yep.
On Main Street there, so I don't know what we do about that, extra garbage cans for that day.
I wonder, I think, okay, don't quote me on this, but I think, uh, they were taking care of the, the porta-johns, I think.
Yeah, that's taken care of.
So I wonder if we can ask. So I wonder if we can ask, um, waste management to have like one day of extra cans? Maybe.
Drop off and pick up?
Yeah, we used to have a bunch of extra cans here, but I think we got rid of them, didn't we?
I think there might be a couple in the bus line.
There's.
But there's new ones.
Fifty-five gallon ones, and there's two rolling bins out there, and then whatever is strewn around the park.
Mm-hmm, we've, we've got.
But we'll need the park ones for all the activities in the park.
Right.
Just like the recycling dumpster.
Yeah, you got everything in there, didn't you? There's like ten a month, it'll be full, every, every week, all ten will be full.
Empty it, and the very next day it'd be fully, you can't even close the.
It wasn't even rice stuff.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Probably you. And so, uh, the church will let us use parking lot, Woodburn Missionary for overflow parking, but we may wanna find a way to have a shuttle service, or somebody with a tractor and shuttle wagon.
Wagons, man, yeah, hay wagons.
So I have access to a golf cart.
Yeah.
Um, where, where transportation can be operated, and possibly the city, uh, the police department, uh, gator.
You still got that buddy?
Take one back.
I bought diet on that thing.
I, I will almost pay a seater.
Yeah, it'll go, these, those things will get buggy, and it's not that heavy, so it's kinda weird.
I might have access too, to a shuttle wagon, so. Pull the tractor.
So.
Alright, anything else?
That's it.
Alright, Dean?
Rifter.
Dan?
No.
No?
Okay.
Alright, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright.
Thank you.